Are we live?
We're live.
Yeah.
Yeah, those white, those white.
Means we're live. Okay. Start, but before we start, I want to make a couple of quick announcements because I want to take every opportunity I can to get stuff out to people. Uh, one of them concerns, uh, nobody can see me, right? Or they can't.
No, they can't.
Uh, the Millis Fund, which is this terrific fund. They do their main fundraising on Super Bowl Sunday, for whatever reason. And it is a terrific fund. Google it, log on to it. Their website is themillisfund.com. And what they do is they help families with emergency financial needs, more like a one-off, like maybe unseen unforeseen medical bill or a car, uh, to fix a car or something like that. Terrific fund. And then the second thing is, um, the Lions Club is having their breakfast on, uh, this Sunday coming. And that's also a great, um, that's a great time, right? You go every year.
I have, this is actually going to be my first, to be honest. Yes.
Okay.
First year, but I hear it's great.
Once.
But I have a sign in my yard, so.
All you can eat, ten dollars. It's at the, um, what are we calling that? St. Thomas Church?
Small hall or the large?
The small hall, large hall, um, across from Napa Tandies. Anyway, that's Sunday and then the Millis Fund. All right. Let's get into the real fun stuff. And our first, um, scheduled appointment is the, uh, Fire Chief, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you for having me. I'm really glad everybody's excited to be here for an interesting day. I'm putting a coffee at Mike's center in the right, so we'll get started. Um, again, overview quickly of the fire department, some slides we'll go through really quick because others will take some time off. But just for the general population to understand, you know, the, uh, different things we do here in town. Obviously, uh, we fight fires, like emergency brush fires, motor vehicle accidents, hazardous materials, weather-related emergencies, permitting, ice rescue, et cetera.
Um, you see that message?
It comes up periodically. Do you want to move the?
It just comes up?
Yeah. Do you want to move the out closer to him?
Yes.
Is it the?
Yeah, it said that the voice quality is poor.
That every time you do it?
Oh, okay.
No, that's just a.
That's a thing? Okay.
Jim's not here.
Sorry.
Just don't worry about it. It's okay.
Okay. All right.
Comes up, I'll try to get rid of it.
Okay, quick overview of the fire. Our current staffing, uh, one full-time fire chief, four full-time lieutenants, twelve full-time fire buddy and P's and eleven on-call firefighters. Um, my, uh, my role is, uh, Monday to Friday, four, but twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five, I can respond. Um, sixteen full-timers, we work in four-group system, one lieutenant, three full-time fire fighters. Um, four hours off and then twenty-four hours back on, ninety-six off. We, uh, have eleven dedicated call members, uh, they're part of the group. Uh, they respond to, uh, support full-time staff on all calls, um, that they're needed. Uh, this slide really shows, uh, our commitment to the community. Uh, we have partnerships with our rec department, our police department, uh, ours, the COA, American Red Cross, we work with, uh, students at the high school. Again, this year we have, uh, two senior projects that we're working on. Um, both very, um, good. We have a, uh, blood drive and a, uh, bone marrow drive where you can get tested. Um, so one of the students is taking, uh, you get put into a registry and it's, uh, you could, like, save somebody's life. Um, and then the other was stop the bleed. And both those projects, one is already been limited, the other one's coming up in April, so keep your eyes open for that. Uh, big accomplishments this year in our community service. Um, Jason Otis Wilson, uh, all of you know, who've, I've taught you in several little classes, uh, was, uh, nominated for fire and life safety educator of the year through the Department of Fire Services, as I stated what I made aware to you at one of the meetings. Uh, I do believe he was robbed, uh, he lost to a chief. Um, I think that was just because of the title, but Otis, he does a great job around, uh, here for us. He's very passionate about the role, um, and we're excited to, uh, continue to deliver, um, public education to the residents. Uh, we were honored to be, uh, given the excellent in community service from, uh, the Safe Coalition in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It was a big awards night, um, several of the members up on the right there, as you can see, were able to go. Um, Rebecca Roche, uh, presented the award to us, so, uh, we're very proud of our community involvement. Our big, uh, struggle this year, and it's going to be echoed through most of these slides, and I'm sure you'll hear the same from the police chief. We saw a record amount of, uh, increase in call volume this year. Usually on average, we go up ten to fifteen percent. This year we went up thirty percent. Uh, we saw an increase of over five hundred calls more than we had last year. Um, we're not alone. Our communities around us are still with the same thing, so we're going to mutually aid, uh, quite a bit as well. We're helping out other communities. Medway, Midfield, Norfolk, we're still providing some ALS to Sherbin and Holliston. Um, so maybe it's, it's been, it's been taxing, but we've been able to get it done. Much of the increase is due to many of the projects that have been completed, um, over these last few years. Again, one twenty-five Dover Road, it's approximately eighty-five percent occupied. Uh, we went there last year two hundred and eighty-four times. For Glenn, it's a hundred percent occupied. We went there a hundred and thirty-seven times. And then two other, all the projects we have here in town. Um, you will see these numbers again. Stony Brook, we went there a hundred and six times, and Willow Brook, we went there seventy-four. Stony Brook, uh, is one of our biggest apartment combustion budgets in town, and Willow Brook is another assistive living, uh, that we have here in town. The biggest struggle that we, uh, we saw was our same simultaneous calls. Um, you can add any dispatcher, how frustrated it is to be dealing with one medical and have another come in. Um, we saw an increase that set sixty-five percent of our calls last year occurred while another one was already in progress. Um, and then approximately fifteen percent of those, we start a third emergency call at the same time. Just for reference, Friday night with our structure fire, we had two medicals during that, immediately clearing. And, uh, while the guy is still trying to get everything back in service, another two medicals came in. So these are piling up, um, and it's a lot. We're very, very lucky because of our dedicated staff, uh, and the way that we've kind of built the department to begin to respond to these things. Uh, I'm sure the chair will like to see this slide because we talked about it at our, uh, planning and development committee. But this is just a quick slide on what we have in the pipeline coming. One of the things we'll hear is, oh, it's not going to get built. I've been here twenty-seven years, I've been chief thirteen, and I've heard those statements multiple times about projects that are now complete and a hundred percent occupied here in town. Um, again, we, there's an addition, uh, proposed to go into Stony Brook, one fourteen Union Street, that's ninety-eight units, eleven seventy-eight Main Street. Uh, we have another development coming in, a cottage Ave, Gateway at Millis is, uh, almost complete, they're, they're working on starting the third building. Calm Little State, Emerson Place, ten-sixth Main Street, Village Street, and then a possible, uh, housing authority addition. You know, so if we just use some average numbers and we kind of went over with the police chief and we talked with the school, you know, using, you know, rough numbers, there's a possibility of eighteen hundred to fourteen hundred people coming to town. Right after preparing this, um, slide, uh, Mr. Weiss, our Economic Development and Planning Director, sent an email about the possibility of what it would look like if MBT three A was completely built up. Now, again, we know that's highly unlikely and we hope it's unlikely, but the possibility for it, um, the numbers are a lot. And as you can see, well, I went through it pretty good, gave it the average, three adults, one child, two adults, two adults and two children, you know, so we have single, double, triples. But it's a possibility of another twenty-seven hundred people in the town, if that is all built out.
Yeah, just a quick comment there. The, um, there's a little, I'm not disputing any of the numbers because I think you're dead on in the top half. The three A, though, I don't think it's going to be as big as it is because Stony Brook is part of that area. And, uh, Herman Schu, is that the one fourteen Union?
No.
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah, but.
That's part of the MBTA, so that's.
Yeah, but it's a.
Yeah, so those, those numbers, I don't want anybody looking at that, saying we're going to have twenty-seven hundred more people coming in based on, it could be two thousand, but it's not going to be.
And like I said, you know, we're hoping it's highly unlikely that that gets built, or maybe a portion of it gets built. Um, but again, we have to prepare for that, and it'll sell it all, and it does get it.
The top is going to get built.
The top is definitely going to get built.
They're already in and per, how many of them are?
No, no, the, the top is a guarantee. The top's a guarantee.
So again, just those numbers there, we see a big impact. Um, you know, so we say, we have the, the chance for an increase in population.
We know, absolutely.
We're getting close to that ten thousand number, which changes a lot of things for its cost weight, but it also changes things brand-wise. As we get past that ten thousand, we qualify for some more grant money. Um, so again, we'll be looking to those as well. Again, I put a, just a kind of a warning down bottom, with all this coming in, you know, the staffing we have, uh, handles what we have right now. This coming in, you know, we will be coming back for staffing over the next three to five years.
When you say all the communities around her experience the same increases, what are they owing it to? Same growth?
Same thing, yes. We look at it, tell me, Medway, I mean, they're blowing up after what's going on. Medfield's having two projects going on there. They have one on West Street that just finished. They have, uh, two others that are in the works. And unfortunately for them, they are negotiating with somebody to do Medfield State Hospital, that property, that's going to be a huge project for them, and that'd be a big impact right now. Uh, Sherbin has like a two-hundred unit pro, uh, going up, think, uh, in between us and Framingham side, um, and then safety with Norfolk. So we're, they're, they're staffed very similar to us. So again, one or two ambulances are out, then let's start to look for others. Medway also has, you know, a assisted living, memory care, you know, like we do.
Yep.
The Willows, um, they're there a lot. They're all the way built out, so they're going there a lot. We go there a lot. It's just what it is. Any other questions on that?
Nope.
I just want people to realize also, as these get the, there will be tax dollars coming in, so there's the possibility to add those staff without it being a huge impact if those get built out, when those get built out.
When they get built up, yep. So coming to the budget, again, it's not a whole lot. We were asked to kind of level upon, uh, most of this, you'll see any of the increases or just step raises that aren't contractual, well, are contractual but are covered under it. We don't have any of the colas in here because we're still in the process of negotiating with the union. Um, I did highlight some of these areas just because I like to stress that, um, you know, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of this budget is funded from our ambulance revenue.
Does that, what percent does that go up every year?
Ambulance, we have a little flat on that.
Oh, my goodness.
So again, you'll see, um, the only increases in there, uh, are two, our call department for wages, um, and then ship coverage. The call, the reason for the increase, uh, for the call members is that we're using them so much more. Before they were three to five times a week, now they're three to four times a day. Um, it is taxing on some of them because they have other jobs, but we are bringing them in quite a bit. Um, and then the ship coverage, it's always been underfunded. We've used a lower number. This is just trying to get us a little bit closer to what it actually takes to cover the ships. Now, that's for sick vacation holiday, um, anytime that people take off, it's just the covering of staff while they're out. Uh, we get to see a reduction in longevity because we had two retirements, so two of those have, have kind of come off. Um, and then same thing with stipends because we lost some of those offers, and they've gone down. They're down towards the bottom, longevity, uh, drop from seven thousand to fifty-six hundred, and stipends drop from seventy-three thousand to sixty-eight thousand. Yeah. Okay. Any questions on any of that?
No, no, no. Okay, I do think it's important to note, um, I know everyone here knows, but that we are in negotiations with all the unions, um, this year, including the, uh, fire department, uh, fire departments union. So, um, I, at this point, these numbers are subject to change based on negotiation, so just. That, that's, uh, we have the police, the fire, the dispatch, the DPW, and the town hall employees.
Yeah. Ambulance revenue. Excuse me. So again, this line is just to kind of walk everybody through our ambulance revenue, uh, points. You know, so you'll see the yellow section is our monthly collection. You can see the track and the, the vast difference in it from twenty-one to twenty-five on monthly, uh, what we're bringing in. At twenty-one, we brought in about, on average, forty thousand, and FY twenty-five, we're averaging really about seventy-five. So I use moderate numbers to use for an average for the remaining months of the year because, uh, we're not there yet. Um, so we use seventy thousand. So we'll see collections somewhere in the eight hundred and seventy-three thousand range, which I think is probably going to be over ninety thousand with the way the calls are going. Um, it shows our balance when we start at the beginning of the year, the collections, available balance, and then what we transfer over to cover that eight hundred and eighty-two thousand of the budget. And then some other expenses that are involved with it, and then we have the remainder, uh, down bottom. Um, the big thing I like to always bring up is nine of the current sixteen full-timers are funded from this. Um, and then with the addition of the staff that I did in two thousand and nineteen, and staffing the second ambulance, um, ninety percent of the times. I need to say it for the last minute.
So the, the gross that comes in minus the net is what this year?
Million.
Yeah.
A million dollars.
And that million is set aside for future ambulance purchases?
Well, so that's the thing, it's, it's therefore a possibility for that, but this is like, uh, it's like a cup. We fill it up and then we drain it down, and it just continues to keep happening. So, uh, I've met with the finance director on discussion that this number is really too big to be in a revolving account, and we've had a discussion about having this moved to the general fund. Uh, so we'll be working on that, uh, and hopefully to be able to present to you next year to see this go right into.
How much does an ambulance cost?
Right now, the latest code for an ambulance is five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I would like to have approximately that set aside somehow so we can buy a new ambulance, but anything in excess of that, I agree with you.
Yep, so two years ago, we, uh, we created a, an ambulance replacement fund.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the language in there that we're able to pull money from this and put it into that fund.
Yeah.
Currently, what we're doing is just trying to make sure we always have enough there to cover the staff, and the worst thing that could happen is that we drain too much of that, and then it become, we have to come to you and say, oh, sure. The goal is, again, it's in here, but in two years, I need to order the next ambulance because it takes two years to get sort of about four years out. Um, the goal would be to try to put enough of that money in there, um, if possible. The other problem is, is that if we continue to have to pay for staffing and the staffing that I'm requesting has to come out of here, then we don't have that money to.
Yeah.
Request for the ambulance.
So the, I have to say this again, the gross that came in, in fiscal twenty twenty-five was how much?
Eight hundred, but we're estimating it at eight hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Okay. You're estimating it, because twenty-four.
We don't have, we don't have anything from November, December. Well, we don't have December through June of this year, upcoming in. And again, we think that's a moderate, moderate estimate, seventy thousand. What you see above that, we're averaging about seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, and you entered the year at like six hundred and fifty-six thousand, if I can see that, twenty twenty-one, rather, you entered this chart at six hundred and fifty-six. Well, yeah. And it's been nominal growth since then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, six fifty-six.
To one million.
To one million, yeah.
So is there anything in the ambulance fund right now?
Money-wise?
Yes.
Yes, uh, we, we got a number the other day, uh, but we're still trying to just, because it comes with comp starts and the tours, and then police has to kind of go through it, so we don't have the final number right now, but.
Okay. Okay.
Right? So spending highlights, again, we were asked to level fund, uh, most of this is just increases with concerns about, um, cost increase for our supplies. Most of our suppliers are said be prepared for a five to ten percent increase, but most of them say eight. I put in seven to try to have a number for us to look at. Do you see, it's just supplies and expenses, uh, medical supplies, again, the increase in our medical calls and, um, let's see this. Um, the increase in the medical calls means we're going through material at a higher rate, so we're seeing, uh, that happen as well. And again, with the increased, uh, cost and the proposal on about eight percent, uh, that's the number you see there. Clothing, same thing, just an increase, and then equipment. Everything's staying between five and ten. As we move down, you'll see, um, I've been working with Assistant Town Administrator. We, we'd like to move the heat, fuel, water, and sewer and electricity out of my budget and into the building's budget. Yep, so that's why you'll see that number that looks a little bit different down there. Uh, with all those things in, and, uh, as we have it right here, the, the request and the proposed budget is, uh, two million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one.
The grounds over there, the grounds.
Yeah.
It's brass, it's nice, beautiful all the time. You maintain that?
We do.
Your own people?
Yes.
Have a lawnmower?
Yes.
That you have somewhere, hidden in your fire department?
Yes.
And they go out and mow?
They do.
And they got little hedges trimmers?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like, uh, we have no maintenance, we do, the guys on shift do all of the.
Right, so there's no line item in there for that? But they get paid?
They're on duty.
They're on duty?
Yep.
I just want to get that, understand that. Kido.
Is that typical?
And firehouses? Yeah, usually. And we feel our pride that it's our, we call it our house. Um, they're there twenty-four hours a day, you know? They weren't presentable, then there's nothing better than having somebody come in, help with your own house, so these guys take a lot of pride. And we had it a lot recently with fire departments in our house covering, um, and every time they leave, they comment on it, and I see the guys smile.
What about plowing?
Plowing, so we have a truck, it's part of this discussion as well, we have a truck with a plow.
You plow your own?
Yep.
And you shovel your own rocks, or whatever it is?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we work with, uh, the town building manager, John Engler, for, we're trying to get everything on the same thing. We try to use the same electricians, heating the, uh, yeah.
HVAC, okay.
There's, we're trying to get them all, we're very, very close and it's been working very well.
I heard, and then I heard the next step, Karen's going to be supplies.
Potentially, but we'll, we're in discussions about that.
Yeah, well.
Wherever we find efficiencies.
It starts with discussions.
And costs savings is what we're looking for.
Mine bolt from the same manufacturer?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Not to jump ahead too much, but just a quick question, um, stuff like preventative maintenance, like on the generators and stuff like that, where is that contained?
Town buildings, town buildings, okay.
So our goal is to remove all of the, uh, the electricity, water, store, heat, fuel over to town buildings?
Yes, although Jody and I have been having discussions about this, what makes the most sense, so we're still kind of talking about it, but I, I think it makes sense. Right now, Victoria pays all of the electric bills.
Yeah.
But they don't all come out of the town buildings account, they come out of various places, so we just need to decide what makes the most sense. Um.
Right.
In any way, I think we should maintain paying all of them, if not.
Yeah, do we need to do some kind of internal transfer back on a percentage basis or something, so when you look year to year, because that's what people will start commenting on, that, that this has gone down dramatically. We'll never comment on that. They'll, they'll comment on town meetings, town buildings going up.
What a ton for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 So that's the way you figure out what, go ahead.
Right, no, I was just going to say, and part of that too, anytime you make a fundamental change, you know, that you can't look year over year and see progression because we had to modify our current accounts, or we had to bring something in line with something else, there's always going to be a crosswalk available so that people understand, like, here's the bottom line. It looks distributed differently, but they can look at sort of a year over year from that perspective. Um, but just to kind of go on what Karen said, I think operationally, it, it's two parts. It's what makes the most business sense as far as consolidating town buildings um, and, and re, shared resources, if you will, um, but balance that with what's the true cost of the operation to a particular area, right? So we don't want to lose that by pushing everything together. Um, and we also don't want to create a new pile of work for somebody that now creates a problem in another area, because now we need more clerical support. So there's still a little bit more investigation around that before we land.
Yeah.
It's ongoing. It's definitely in process.
Good.
And we're making great strides.
That's one of the main reasons we're putting it here to make you aware of that. We're trying to, yeah, same thing with the. This is what we're working on, they're not done right now, but it's definitely, yeah, perfect.
Right.
Good.
And just to Chief's point as well, um, just about the revolving fund, you know, there's, things get set up for a purpose and for an intention at a given time, and then just sort of historically just kept, keep getting rolled over and renewed. And so what we've tried to do during this budget process is really just take a deep dive to kind of understand fundamentally, how did this get created, why did it get created, and has that purpose expired? You know, and does it make sense to look at it a little bit differently? So whether or not ambulance receipts get rolled into part of our local receipts as part of our general fund in the future, or not, those are discussions we can have. We're just on that, still on that, um, investigative front.
I love everything about it.
I was going to say, the really nice part is Jody's new to this process, right?
Yes.
For the first year, she's looking at this with fresh eyes, so she's saying, we're saying this is what we're looking for, she's bringing up things I hadn't even thought of.
There are so many things that we do here, that we do it in life too.
Yeah.
That we don't do a, a check, we don't check. Why is that? Well, your predecessor started it ten years ago. Okay, well, does it make sense today?
Right.
So glad that you're doing that.
Yeah, and again, like, Jody was very good when we discussed it, because a lot of people get very protective about that, you know, revenues.
Yes, they do.
And for me, it does not matter, again.
No.
My goal.
Because you have that in your own bank account, what do you care?
All we'd like to do, yeah. Yeah, my personal goal is to make sure we have enough to buy an ambulance, whenever it comes to. Beyond that, I think that anything in excess, yeah, gets rolled over.
And I think, right, it may.
Yeah.
But I get that totally.
Yeah.
That's part of your thing.
Yeah.
I, I would be.
Yeah.
I would be, uh, taken away from me if I couldn't open up my book and see a million dollars.
Taken it away.
The other thing is, it's not like, maybe just waving with it.
I know.
It was just my budget.
I know, it doesn't matter.
People that still have to make them sick.
I, I do want to come up with, and not, not at this meeting obviously, but some plan that we can show an easy crosswalk back. I mean, because otherwise it's just going to be nothing but two hours of questions about why town buildings went up.
Yeah.
And what did we build that nobody knows about?
Typically, what ends up happening in those transition years is you, you have a budget book, um, with the historical information, and then one with the new information, and then that crosswalk in between. And it's double the work for that year, but it just gets you tipped over that home, so.
It's good, good stuff.
Great.
Uh-oh.
So just again, non-tax funding and stuff that we do, the permits, um, you know, plan review, all that, and then the grants that we get from, uh, state, we put in for a bunch, unfortunately, uh, two of them, we had a big one that we put in with Bellamy and Portobello Radios. Uh, we finalized very high, but then the funding just failed, so we weren't able to get that. Um, you'll see, I got one coming up, that's a pretty big one that we're requesting some funding for, hopefully the funds stay there, and then we'll have to. But that's some of the other areas. So a request for level service, you know, we've talked about this, and that's something I've brought up for multiple years, it's the same slide. This year I took a little different approach to it. Um, my goal this year is to, again, get a full-time fire captain EMS coordinator that is, uh, that works an administrative schedule. What, the way I'd like to do this is take the current lieutenant, promote that person to captain, uh, and then put them in that administration. When we do that, uh, we then open up a position for a younger firefighter paramedic to come in to fill the full-time role, um, and also another lieutenant's position. So the breakdown of it, because the captain comes in, he's working forty hours, not forty-two, um, his salary would have been about eighty-eight thousand. His current, as a lieutenant, he's working forty-two hours at twenty-six, same thing, he's about six hundred and forty-five dollars less than that. So that's the little bit of a change to put him in there. A new firefighter paramedic coming to the door, uh, young, step one, seventy thousand, and then to promote a lieutenant from the firefighter is about four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. For total for the all positions, get this position is seventy-five thousand, four twenty-one, sixty. This does not include health insurance, the numbers from the town side, uh, this is just my numbers that we would need. Uh, this is a, this is, it's priority one. If we're going to, uh, you know, start increasing staffing, this is, this is priority for one, this is where we need to go. Additionally, having him on duty during the day helps us, uh, staff that second ambulance, less callback, less overtime, et cetera. There's a list of towns, everybody around us with their staffing, um, big things for him, um, currently as the EMS coordinator. Start from to do most of the stuff on shift. It used to be the stipend position that he never works on shift. From his, you're on shift and you're doing fourteen calls, it's hard to sit down, bill out a grant or attend a meeting. So a lot of stuff is, he's coming in off, uh, overtime. The other thing it helps with is some of the day-to-day personnel management, especially when it comes to EMS. There's a lot of regulations that we have to follow. Um, and having, uh, somebody there every day would help a lot with it and attend, uh, meetings, et cetera. Fire prevention and code compliance, so we were very lucky to do most of it, uh, with our on-duty staff, but again, we missed probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred inspections because when we were scheduled to be there, they were out on calls, or we were just unable to do it. Um, that's tough on the building community, as you know, if they scheduled to have sprinkler guys, uh, fire alarm guys and the job super there, and then we don't show up, and we say, oh, we'll be there in two hours. That's an inconvenience for them, so, um, we're hoping to have him do some of that, uh, code compliance as well as plan review. I think the biggest thing, uh, we don't look at it long enough, is succession planning. Should be something that we're considering here in both positions, and for my position, it's no different. Um, you know, many people think I'll be here forever, but I can tell you I'm no going to be. And I would like to make sure that I read the fire department in the hands, somebody who's going to continue to do it in a manner that I expect and you expect. Uh, so that's the goal, was to have, uh, some succession planning done as well.
So that does, this does that.
This does, this person would be the second highest ranking, um, person on the.
This is the same thing that was on the override?
It was.
Okay.
Same thing that was on the budget last year and the year before that.
Yep.
This slide is just kind of a. Notification that the last time anybody on the fire department had a taxation was two thousand eighteen. Since then, we've had full, four full-time members, um, and it's been done with a million dollar grant. Um, that was funded for three years, and then the rest has been paid for with ambulance revenue, and that same time, we've had three or four of the biggest projects we've had here. Come online, um, in Con Place, the Glen, one twenty-five Dovero, and two thirty-two, two forty-four Main Street, amongst other projects. Very little of that money coming from that taxation has made it witness way of public safety, again, we funded my positions with ambulance revenue. Any, any questions on that before I move on to capital?
Oh, I'm thinking, no.
Capital replacement, we talked about, yeah, it's also a brush truck, this year, while we were doing our state inspection and doing preventative maintenance. Um, and we determined that brush two can no longer be utilized as a brush truck, we have a lot of rot, there's pictures that are coming up. Uh, it's a two thousand eight Ford F three fifty, um, it's got thirty thousand miles on it, um, so it's still got life in it. So the goal is to, um, repurpose it a little bit, still use it as a pickup truck, still plow, still pull the trailer with it. Uh, my recommendation is to replace the brush piece, uh, with a much less, uh, costing piece, and it's a U T V. Uh, about fifty-four thousand, add a trailer, we're about sixty-eight thousand for a U T V. Um, that can get us into many areas that we need here in town, and that's on the next slide. We got a rough estimate to repair brush two, so that it is roadworthy and, uh, usable, that's about twenty thousand dollars, so the total project cost is eighty-eight thousand two seventy-one. U T V, um, it's a, a very common piece of equipment that's in many fire and police departments. Our police department had one, we utilized it many times, unfortunately, the police department U T V is not set up for EMS. Uh, we've had to pull patients out of the woods with a backboard, um, and again, we've had to just have straddle a U T V, it's not very safe. Um, so this, this function had both a brush fire function and an EMS function. Last year, we had probably a worst drought we've had in years, and probably the worst brush fire season in Massachusetts that we've ever seen. Um, several area towns utilized their U T V, um, and we were, uh, we did not have one. Uh, we have many areas in town that we use, we use it, uh, the Glen walking trails, um, you know, there's access up there. We were approached by, um, there, from them with concerns about those walking trails during the brush fire season. Because it's all just overgrown, very, very dry, luckily, we had a great plan in place, um, but it really is just protecting the homes. Because we can't get many of the trucks out onto, uh, some of the areas, Ogro Farm.
But the walking trails of the Glen, aren't, who maintains them?
I think they do, they do a great job, a lot of mowing on the side.
Alright, so they maintain them?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, I think part of, I'm not certain, I think that's part of the agreement that we did access, but they didn't know.
It was all overgrown.
Yeah.
Everywhere is some of the walking trails, if you walk those walking trails, you can't see the other trails, so, because it's, they only do. What's necessary.
Okay.
Keep the trails open.
So most of it's paved, because it was the old golf carts, uh, golf cart, yeah. So again, if you haven't been up there, take a walk, you'll see about four to five foot, you know, brush scrub that's, uh, you know, takes up most of that area. Plus a lot of downed trees, and a lot of stuff that used to be greens that are.
Okay, but you're not suggesting that the town go in and clean that up?
No, no.
They should be doing that.
I'm not even suggesting that.
Oh, well, it sounds like you're suggesting something.
Vehicle, so I've asked us to go in there.
It would be easier if it were maintained.
Yeah, for that one project, yeah, that one project, sure, but we still need to get out there a few or somebody.
No, no, I understand that, but if they expect us to go out there and pull somebody out of the weeds, they should maintain it.
But it's the same, same expectation as any other taxpayer in town, they expect us to go into their woods to extricate them, so. It's really no different.
Okay.
Ogro Farm, again, we utilize quite a bit, we have, uh, acres of fields and walking trails, same exact thing. We had two brush fires there last year, luckily, they were in areas that we could access with the pickup trucks, uh, but there are a lot of areas that we can't. They utilize that for a lot of things, the trails have been greatly improved, I don't know.
Yes.
Beautiful.
Fantastic.
Great, again, but we have limited access to a lot of the areas just because of the size of trucks and, uh, area. They're using it for cross-country track events, uh, so again, somebody in the woods that we have to go get, either we're hauling about that mile of a walk. He's trying to do it on there. Applemore Farm, same thing, we have a lot of horse competitions up there, we've taken several people out of the woods up there, Island Road. Got some of the town old land, the old landfills, some of those areas, and then last year, one of the big things that popped up with that discussion with our wildland. Um, there in Massachusetts was the Great Black Swamp, it's always been a concern, this has always been on our hazard mitigation plan. Uh, last year, the Army Corps engineered a black swamp, uh, it's over three hundred and thirty acres, uh, most of that. Uh, with a good pair of boots and some dip waders, you can get through it, um, that stuff will burn, and that's one of the biggest concerns the state has. So this U T V we utilize to get us into those areas, bring members in there, it has water on it, it has hose, starts the extinguishment. Um, it's a people mover, and the big, and the other big thing is that it's an EMS, uh, aspect to it.
Okay, you said the police has a U T V.
Yeah.
But that's not a, a fire U T V.
It's not, so theirs is a two-person U T V, a two-person U T V with a, a little bit of a bed. Um, this, as you can see in the picture, this has, um, an EMS component that we.
There's no way that one.
Can be retrofitted to this?
Yes.
This is brush two, the underneath, again, the New England weather winters have not been good to it, uh, we have a lot of cross builders that have gone. Our goal hopefully is to, um, put about twenty thousand dollars in there, make the repairs. Make it so that we can still use it, defile, pull trailers, you know, this unit pulls the, uh, recu boat that pulls, uh, it pulled this trailer. Afforded it, um, and we can get at least over ten years out of it. Questions?
Nope, I'm good, you good Erin?
I'm good.
We're good.
Thank you, uh, the next one is, uh, radio box, uh, receiver, uh, this was installed in two thousand seventeen. Um, just like any technology, now it's no good, they're no longer supporting it, um, this is how we get fire alarms from municipal buildings. Community buildings, merchant buildings, schools, D P W, um, we have one in the fire station and one in the police station. So right now, there's twenty-two buildings monitored, uh, you'll see on the quote, um, that the company has said, it's no longer being manufactured. Uh, it's at the end of the life, all the stories that they wanna give you, the goal is they want this to be replaced within the next one or two years. Uh, this is on your radar as a replacement, the request is for seventy-five thousand, eighty.
Does this mean that the twenty-two buildings being monitored by the system, that they need new equipment?
No.
Thank you. Not that I'm looking out for myself here, there's this twenty-two buildings, but I probably have a couple of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions?
You said that's the next couple of years, that's not.
This year, next, yeah, yeah, this is, it's making you aware that they're gonna tell us at some point, it's no longer good, and as you know. The update's no good, and it will die the next day, it's a big trouble, so, just to make you aware. Uh, just some upcoming capital replacements, again, the other brush truck we have is the nineteen ninety-nine F four fifty. Um, you know, they gave us a rough quote of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand to replace it, I'm not in favor of that, my goal is to probably look for some money to refurbish it. Do it for a little bit less, it's, the nineteen ninety-nine, yes, it's old, but it's a brush truck, so it's got about twenty thousand miles, so I think we can get some time out of it. So the goal is to do a refurbishment, uh, and then again, like we talked about the ambulance, A two will be up roughly about five hundred thousand. This is also something we're looking into a refurbishment, uh, what they're doing a lot of is they're taking the box off, putting on a new cabin chassis, and just.
Taking the what off?
The box on the back of the ambulance, that you transported it, they lift it up.
Put it on another.
New cabin chassis, make some updates to it at a much lesser cost, so we're looking at that as well, we're hoping, again, the other problem is, three years. Two, three years of a, a replacement, uh, this might be, the box is the thing that takes the longest.
Yeah.
We can get a cabin chassis, they throw it on, we see it in a year, it's a win for everybody, with a reduced rate. Thank you, any questions?
So what's the bottom line of your, well, if you got, if your wish was.
Never, you never ask that question.
You don't ask that. Okay.
No, we'll get that, the, the capital planning, we'll review it all, and then.
That's everything, there's no surprise, everything's pretty.
I just have one question, because it comes up every time you mention it, people say mutual aid, we're doing two hundred whatever calls. Why are we wasting our time on mutual aid, we should say no, the right answer is absolutely not, if they come to us.
You can't, you're not allowed to.
Right, exactly.
And why would you?
Right.
Question we must go, um, and it's the same mutual.
Yeah. And I'm not saying that we should not go, I'm just saying that that comes up every time you talk about mutual aid, that we would save a ton of money if we just left everybody to burn.
But if you ever, but if you ever pass anything, if you ever pass a catastrophe or whatever, you will see every town there.
Yeah.
Again, the big thing is, like we said, on the fire side, we bring mutual aid and it's needed, and, uh, we will never stop calling mutual aid. And as far as EMS, the amount of requests that we're getting from in town as well, we're using mutual aid as well. And that means if I deny somebody in Medway, that we're not gonna go, I mean, somebody's family members waiting.
So, well, explain though for a second for people that don't know, maybe me included, I don't know, um, you don't, we don't reimburse them. If, if Sherwin comes in and helps out, they, whatever the cost is, the cost, it's clean.
Yeah.
And nobody does a tally at the end, it says, hey, Sherwin.
You did this much, but EMS wise, same thing, if we go to their town, we transport that patient, we build a patient, we're taking all of that revenue. Uh, that's, that was one of the big things for staff in our second ambulance, we were giving it away because we weren't able to do that. Now that revenue was all clean here in the town.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't only ask that, because last year at this same time, we did the same thing, and people were all up in arms that we shouldn't.
Yeah, get rid of it.
Get rid of it, get rid, just like school choice, get rid of it, get rid, people understand this much of the problem, have all the.
Try counting, don't.
Try counting, yeah, all the answers on it, so it's not something that is morally right to get rid of, or financially right to get rid of, or safety, or legally.
Legally.
So there is really no way out of it, so if anybody comes up with the idea that we could save a ton of money in the fire department by getting rid of it, they're just wrong, thank you.
Yeah, we, we don't wanna.
Just to be clear, right.
Right.
No, anything from you guys?
No.
Anything from, do we allow anybody from the audience?
Jody was saying, we're pulling, right now with the ambulance, it's about seven hundred and ninety thousand.
So clearly enough to cover another ambulance, we don't need to add more.
Yeah, so we have to pull for the.
I don't care if anybody asks, does anybody have any questions? John, nobody?
Actually, I have one more, I have one more question, hold on, um. So be patient, so, um, I might, I might not map right here, but, um. If the ambulance fund brings in around, like upwards of a million dollars. And the budget is for like eight hundred something thousand. And we already have enough money for an ambulance, um, would.
Why don't you take the two hundred thousand?
Why, wouldn't we be able to fund the positions you're asking for out of that?
Hundred percent.
And then still possibly have some that we can put in the revolving fund?
Yes.
Okay, alright, alright, just checking.
So what we've done, what we've done with that, again, like I said, it's not my checkbook, I have sent it to you, and if you guys make that decision that we use ambulance revenue, it's what it.
The only thing we wanna make sure of is that we have enough extra to cover a, a Holliston or somebody buying a brand new EMS. Full-on paramedic service, our revenue drops.
Exactly, you have to be prepared for that.
Oh, I also looked a point out, I think that it's, it's a lot, and again, Chief's done an amazing job, but accounts this size. He's essentially running his little enterprise, right, which is a lot of responsibility for a fire chief, or anybody for that matter. To be responsible for all of their staffing through their ambulance receipts and revenues, so while that's been the practice, that's okay. But I think that what I will bring you guys to is a decision point of this or that, we can do this, but this is what it looks like. Or we can transfer some of those receipts to the general fund, and then assume the staffing and the overhead in the general fund, right? Because what I would never like to see for the town or for you, is something happens with ambulance receipts, right, now we're laying off. So there's that balance, and I think that we're just at a place now with this particular fund, it was established, what, fifteen, twenty years ago?
More than that.
It's been a long time, so, well, we'll just think that, it's something that we can explore a bit more, um, but it's not, yeah. You know, it's in both places, it's like this model looks like this, and this model looks like that, and here's what comes of each.
Well, that's what we did with, not to spoil surprise for our next group, but that's what we did with Rec, um, a few years ago, we took the revolving fund, put it in the general fund. Now they're fully covered, and if they have overages or shortages, it's not you. You have to run out of the room, we understand. So, no, I like the idea of it going into the general fund, we do a budget adjustment, but.
Let's hear your whole presentation, yeah, and again, with the, with the potential of us asking for more staff moving forward. You know, that ambulance revenue won't be able to support it, it will definitely have to be something.
Right, and then we just assume that it'll be at a high enough level to support a percentage of it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, are we good?
I don't know, I, I mean, I wanna keep this, uh, very healthy, so, I'll say my. Just real quick, I do manage the emergency management, it's, there's not a whole lot, and it, it there's a.
Okay.
Self, and then operating, the, the big thing is just, you know, you know, we, uh, emergency management, we prepare for, we've done some hazard mitigation grants. Care for, uh, emergencies in town that grow beyond the police and fire department we, you know, rely on. You, uh, to assist, we had a story broken, you did a good job, um, we're also part of our, um, regional emergency planning committee. And then we work with them with grants as well, that's the funds that you see in there.
And I just wanna thank the chief, because, uh, uh, recently, for the last year or two. Um, he moved the, uh, emergency management over to the fire station, which has opened up space downstairs that we desperately needed to move. The storage, which has opened up space in other areas of the town hall, so that's worked out very well.
Yes, the, um, the, uh, senior center thanks you beyond, beyond, right Joyce? You got that room, a lot of work you did, okay, just checking. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, next, Rec.
He warmed up the crowd for you.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, we ready?
And we're dead on schedule, I hadn't been late just.
But you ready? Alright, do it.
Recreation Director, I'm here to present my budget, a couple of things really quick, of some of our highlights. As you recall, Erin LeBlanc was awarded the Massachusetts REC and Heart Association Community Professional of the Year last year. Um, we were also able to create the program coordinator position, established that last year with your help, so thank you. Uh, we did increase our revenue by twenty-eight percent, and the carnival has returned and was very successful. We also added the fireworks last year, which was amazing, so we are planning on doing that again this year. Uh, some of our goals would be to expand the adaptive programs, and I did put in there. Spent the twenty twenty-four summary of, uh, Mills rec serves, what they did last year. We'd also like to increase the roster for the Mills rec serves and, and the volunteer hours, because they're doing a fantastic job. And we're gonna develop, or continue to develop, new and innovative programs for the teen and tween population, you know, finding that. We need to dive in a little bit more with them, and also, first and foremost, we are continuing to seek alternate. Funding sources and grants, um, for our programs and events.
You increased revenue by twenty-eight percent over last year?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what's it been before, is that an all-time high?
Um, yes, um, so if you look, I did these shots, I have blue sheets on it, um. So we went from FY twenty-two, went up about ten percent, then from twenty-three to twenty-four. We went up twenty-eight percent, and this year is their guesstimate, because I don't know what the numbers are gonna be, um. And this year is a fair guesstimate, because I don't know what the numbers are gonna be. Um, we just, we said twenty percent. Oh, so that is, that is uh, revenue versus expenses. Next chart, we have, and this is for our registration and program offerings. So our pretty much stayed level, which is okay. But again, the, the money, the monies went up, the revenues went up, so that was kind of a planned part on our behalf. Because we did increase some of the fees, and if we didn't get a big jump in participation, um, we were still collecting revenue. Above what we heard before. So for our level funded, it's going to be for salaries, uh, the hundred and thirty five thousand thirty four dollars. So this includes the director salary, program coordinator and camp staff. And the other level funded is for the expenses for a hundred and one thousand dollars. Questions so far?
I have a question. On the recreation form, you and Christina, in the variance details, is two and a half and three for director salaries, is that included in the number for the FY twenty six request or not?
No, it's not, right? I just gave those numbers, I just gave you, we're level funded.
Okay.
That's just a note for after.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so getting on to that, my, two questions for the above level request. So the first one would be to increase the director's position to thirty seven and a half.
Thirty seven, two and a half hours.
Yes, please. So it would be an additional two and a half hours. And that amount would be four thousand three hundred and sixty six dollars. So a quick synopsis, the director position is salary position in thirty five hours. Programs and events are held during regular work hours in addition to evenings, holidays, weekends, and this is to accommodate the public. Just the position does not allow overtime, so increasing the hours to thirty seven and a half, we're allowed for fair compensation. Uh, the director's position is responsible for multiple leagues that are conducted on the weekends and must be present to ensure the facilities are open and closed properly. And the changing of the staff, make sure everybody shows up and keep it operating um, during the programs. Um, there's also so many special events throughout the year and it does require multiple days, the hours of preparation that are outside of the regular scope of the work day. Two and a half hours would, would increase and it would also align this position to all other department heads. The union is supportive of this. And I did a quick thing, um, a couple of weeks ago, I had them run the key fob, now that we have the key fobs here. And we got them last April. So I had Jim run it from April to December. And so that was, it was thirty seven weeks, and if you look at the report, seventeen of those weekends I'm here. Um, and this is just a sample to help justify the request for these additional two hours. And I do have that key fob report, if anybody needs to look at it or available, um, rest.
When you say this along, aligns with all of the director positions, you mean in terms of hours?
In town hall, the, the positions are forty hours.
Okay, and you've always been thirty five?
Yes.
For whatever reason?
Uh, it was thirty, uh, probably twenty years ago, we first started and then it went up to thirty.
And how long's it been thirty? Oh, a long time.
Okay. Any other questions? Great, okay, above level two request. This is going to be, um, increasing supplies and expense line item to a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. So, in a nutshell, we've been in the process of restructuring the direct department. Just, we're trying to find that sweet spot and see what number is actually the real number. Um, by increasing it, there's, it's a combination of, we were slightly underfunded last year and the constant increase in cost of materials are going. So we actually went in and reviewed what our average fees and probably gone up, and it's about twenty percent. And this is going to include, um, our instructors, it includes our supplies. Um, you know, for example, it costs fifteen dollars a couple of years ago for basketball, it's now twenty two dollars. Um, trophies and T-shirts have also gone up slightly, you know, two to four dollars per shirt or trophy, but it does add up. Um, also what was added into our line item for expenses was the constant contact, that's our software, our registration software. So that was in IT and we're shifting it over to the rec department, because that's, that's the true, it's for the rec department. Postage is also gone up and we're getting more residents, so we need to print more brochures and mail them out to more residents.
How much does that IT thing cost?
Um, that is, it's like thirty, seventy dollars.
Oh.
That, it's including that as well as we have constant contact, which is our email blast. You get an email for us, um, it's, it's great too, because if the town needs something, personally, you gotta send this out to everybody. So I collect all that information, we put it into, uh, the email system and it continues, it grows and grows and grows, so, um, we're reaching, we're reaching a lot of people. Um, we've also done some community comparisons and, you know, the average fees, we were slightly under, so we are adjusting accordingly to make sure our fees are in line with everybody else. And again, this was making sure we cover the cost for the, um, the increased supplies. So there's attached, we also put together a quick snapshot of some of our hardcore, um, instructors that we use. So it's just so you can see how their fees have gone up. Um, and the percentages, so again, we're, we're making adjustments and making sure that we're in line with those. Yeah, I think that was it. I mean, it's basic, it's basically fees are going up. More supplies and expenses, um, and instructors are going up as well. So that is the.
But you are gonna be adjusting your fees, maybe, whatever you can do to.
Right, well, that's, that should be offset by the increased fees, so it shouldn't be a direct impact on the general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we, we transfer a certain amount, I think it was two hundred thousand last year of recreation fees into the general fund to pay for this. Yeah.
Yeah, two hundred and twenty seven thousand.
Two hundred and twenty seven, okay.
So, um, the other thing that I'll make mention of is, one of the things, um, that we talked through, Chris and I, um, was the hundred and one thousand dollars was just a, a static line item year after year in terms of supplies and expenses, but in order to get down to program costs, um, we work together to make sure that that got broken out a bit more. So program related contract services, software, so you'll see on the left side of your packet, um, that that a hundred and one thousand plus some increases to supplies and whatnot were redistributed amongst six different line items, so that it was a little bit, uh, more transparent in that area. And the other thing you'll notice that, um, is in there as well is some training meetings and dues, so I know that the town administrator is very supportive of, uh, training and professional development and certifications and classes and that sort of thing across the town and all the employees, so that was a line item that previously hadn't been there before. Um, so one of the things is we're scrubbing through, you know, the chart of accounts, we just wanna make sure that everybody's afforded those opportunities. So that's a new line item for them this year.
And I'd like to add, Jody, unbelievable, so helpful and it was, and this moving forward, it, it's, it's just amazing, because I had it split out in so many different things and it was like, you know what? Let's, let's put these together, you know, what are your program costs, what, everything is related to programming and then, you know, kinda see it that way and it was just very helpful and you were very, so thank you, appreciate it.
You're making a difference, Jody. I'm hearing that. And I'm, I'm hearing that a lot in town hall, so. It's all good.
Um, last but not least, we are going to be requesting, um, I think this probably will be the last time, uh, some money for, from the host agreement. And again, this is, this is not new, this is for the inclusive camp. And it's, the request total would be for seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. And that would be for salaries and supplies. Uh, the main, the main one is, is salaries, we're only requesting a thousand dollars for CIVI's for the camp. The recreation, we're looking forward to doing this camp again, we've done it for past several years, it's a four week program. And it's been very successful and the feedback has been incredible. And after careful review, uh, we are recommending to increase the camp directors' hours from sixteen hours to twenty hours per week. And this is to ensure planning and preparation for daily activities. So that's, there was a slight increase from last year, I think it was, I think it's four hundred and eighty dollars. That accounts for, uh, the additional hours. Um, you know, by using this host agreement and the fund, it goes directly to, you know, the employee, the staff, and these are most all Millis residents and students, so it offsets the pricing and, um, for a lower registration fee, so families can afford it as well. Um, again, we are fully aware this is going away and so last year, we even did the just slightly increase, thinking we didn't know if it was gonna be available this year. Um, and even right now, as we're doing the brochure, we have restructured the fees, um, knowing it's, it's not gonna be here next year, so it's, but it's not gonna be sticker shock to anybody who registers. So the fees have been adjusted and we did bump them up a little bit more, so, and it's gonna be self-funded.
Got a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
First, it's only here for half a year, so that's gonna dramatically impact, because we got the school resource officer, we've got this, the library, we got a lot of places it hits and we're only gonna be able to do about half as much as we did prior year. But my other question is on this twenty five thousand dollar above level service for, um, supplies, is that factored into the one twenty six you're showing there right now? Because that's, without mathing. You know, with mathing, it is included there. That, so, so that's not, that above level service is already factored into the one hundred and twenty six thousand we're looking at. Okay, so that's not additional cost. So the only additional, um, it's an additional cost this year, but it's not a cost, it's not in the budget at this moment. The cost that's not in the budget, is the four thousand three hundred and sixty in the budget as well?
Um, Chris, did you? That's, that's the.
That's not in the, uh.
That's what I was asking about earlier.
It is, it is.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay, so the, so the above level service is already included in. And the previous years, and I hate this question and this, is it, because I never, I never know. Is HCA included in prior years I'm looking at or is that separate? So in other words, if I'm looking at, at FY twenty five adopted, um, program coordinator forty one thousand, does that include HCA funds or not?
Um, second, so you're, I'm sorry, I'm gonna break. FY twenty four, you're gonna see it in actuals.
Yeah.
FY twenty five, you are not gonna see it in adopted because it was an additional transfer after town meeting. So the original adopted budget that started the, started the year was not the same.
Right, that ended it.
That ended it, because of the transfer that happened in November after town meeting and those additional operating funds were voted.
Yeah, it would be really helpful to see. Well, I, no, no, I, actually what I'm, what I'm interested in is the final adopted FY twenty five with everything, with anything that's in it.
I say that every budget.
And, and even bracketed with HCA.
Right, and I can, um, I don't wanna take away from yours, but I do have some executive summary document for the board so that you guys can sort of have all this information culled down into, okay, so what's the, give me the bottom line, right? So that'll, I will have that for you on, um, free cash, HCA, above level service and capital, just a quick summary, this is what's being asked for. Uh, so this'll get into the details with each department and then you'll get those after.
That would be good.
So this two seventy would really need to meet her request, three hundred, or thirty four thousand eight hundred-ish of HCA money is what's being requested, two at seventeen four?
Yeah.
One at seventeen four. Exclusive camp, get out and play, oh, that's, yeah, okay.
See last year's HCA will help a lot and understand the changes.
Yeah, somehow, just so we understand what we're trying to, what's going away.
So this, I think is, you can basically see what we're trying to look for, you know, for this year. We're gonna be able to either, um, take that smaller amount of money and redistribute to the same request score, you know.
Yeah, I, then I'm a little, that, maybe I just forgot, but the program coordinator grew, uh, growing from twenty four to forty one last year and without HCA being impacted there surprises me a little bit, but not. Oh, that's what we did, okay, thank you. Oh, and the one above it went down. Yep, I got it, thank you. And, uh.
What's your second, did you have a second question?
No, that was it, I think. It's just, it's just the HCA, it always confuses me.
Because it gets voted as additional.
Yeah, which.
You have a question?
I have a non-budget question. Camp registration for the summer come, going to.
So right now, we're thinking positively that all this is gonna go through and we, Erin and I are working on the brochure right now, the deadline for instructors as of Friday, so hopefully we'll have something ready to get printed and posted online within like two weeks.
So get out and play and stuff.
For average spring and summer.
Great, awesome.
Hold a spot.
Noting that it's contingent on appropriation.
Yes, yes. So that's, we, we're gonna advertise, I spoke to Karen, we're just gonna put like a little caveat in there, like between the director and the staff and whatnot, and they'll just say, you know, pending on. Okay, so we, we have to look now.
Yeah.
Okay, we good, everybody?
Yeah, we're good.
Good, everybody?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris. We're gonna get back on track, we only six minutes over. Chris, you ready? Please. I'm a pole lead.
Thank you, there's big paper.
I know, right? But the print is too small. The paper's bigger, but.
I don't know if we want anything with this.
But the print is just small.
My prime, I couldn't fit that on one page, nobody would be able to read it. Erin, my camp's ninety seven percent full already.
It doesn't surprise me.
I was, I was shocked when I, they fill up fast.
I don't even know what I'm doing with my kids yet.
Our resident camp on the Cape filled up in, um, in, uh, about forty eight hours.
You have to start so early.
And that was November is when we put it on the market. And then, uh, our day camps are ninety seven percent now. So, if you wanna go to Quincy, I can get you a spot.
Just what she wants to do.
I'll take the kids, hopefully extensively.
Oh, my God. Here, pick your kids up, door to door.
They have to listen to my books on tape.
Call me when.
And not speak to me.
Call me when that actually goes, gets into play, will ya?
I'll even get you the best counselors.
I just need them alive and occupied while I have the pole.
That is actually our bare bones, we try to build from that.
You need any help there, Chris? Cause you know, I'm so technologically capable.
See Chris on screen and.
Barely open up my.
I'm surprised it's not here.
What?
Your computer.
It is, but he told me I didn't need it.
Yeah. I got nothing.
You got nothing?
Yeah, no, no, I got the book.
We got the book.
And then we're gonna start pulling sections out of the book as things change, so there's a lot of shredding involved. I'd like all mine digital. Cause I'm just that way.
Yeah.
Oh, wait for the slackboard, when do we get all these, uh, indentations?
When we're done? No, uh. The books will be, right now, there's a lot of stuff missing on it, we're getting great presentations, but the budgets themselves have a lot of questions. Whether ready to be presented.
Okay.
Like the fire didn't have the twenty five, twenty six numbers in it, in our book. So I think once we get the numbers filled in, it makes sense to get them to you. I don't know.
Mike, do you know, when it'll be there?
It's probably by, by the end of the week or.
Next week?
Yeah, so.
Well, they had, if the thing coming has their first.
Yeah.
By the end of the twelfth.
On the twelfth.
Yeah, so I would think you'd want to, yeah, I would, yeah, I would think you'd want to see, um. Something a little more completed for the departments you're looking at, not something that's, yeah, yeah. That's something that like, again, fire had wonderful presentation. They could give you that presentation, but the budget documents. Yeah. Didn't have a twenty six number in it at all. So I'm feverishly noting, then realize I'll just wait for Jody to actually give me.
Well, he has, well, he have it for the twelfth. Oh.
Sure.
Okay.
I think the, the schedule happened in such a way that it were actually a week ahead, like a week. Earlier than we were last year as far as budgets go, so it's just shrunk the amount of time to be able to get all the information.
Yeah.
Double check it, review it and get it out to you guys. That'll be happening this week and next.
Yeah, so rec, animal, I T, C O A, library on the twelve.
Yep. So you'll, you'll have all of that information.
Yep.
Okay, sure. So, okay, so if you can't do it all, get those five.
Like we did, I think we've done in the past, if we can't have the whole book to you by the twelfth, we'll certainly get. All those budgets to you at least forty eight hours in advance. So the committee has time to review those budgets. And then we, you know, hopefully we'll have the books ready on hand.
Yeah.
For, for the, uh, for your meeting on the twelfth.
Yeah.
Uh, base with it there. Base with it up.
John, I'll listen to what Ford too. I'll make sure you guys have an executive summary of the above level service. Use your requests so that you guys can just one dot.
Actually, one.
Might just be more of a point.
Yeah. But, um, somebody I can afford to decide.
Chris, you ready? You think so? You know so. Really?
You can see everything.
Yeah.
Sort of. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, now, yeah, beautiful.
Good.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
Um, like Chief Barrett said, probably a lot of the same stuff you're going to see in my presentation as you saw in his. So I'm going to discuss the achievements of last year quickly. Budgeting for the upcoming, uh, staffing, scheduling and training. Every year. We do a, the office do a fan chat, fantastic job of taking advantage of. Grants that are available to the police department. Couple of things is evidence room that we get certified and audited every year. It's a grant, but that being said, that's huge for the town for liability purposes. We have a third party come in, evaluate in cash. Drugs, firearms. Guns, uh, everything. And they literally go through hills and count them one by one. And since twenty sixteen. Done at a hundred percent. So we just had that done and over. Full of group vest grant, that's how we outfit the officers with their vests. Guys haven't had to purchase a vest in years. Sergeant Roy manages the vest permits. Dispatch training grant that varies each year. Through state nine on one. This year we got just a little bit over six thousand dollars, which will cover. The annual recertification, those focus technology and equipment grant. Primarily has been used for equipment inside of the cruisers as well as dispatch. So a lot of the times when we build out the cruisers and have we ask for a vehicle. A substantial cost of that is the M D T mobile data terminals, those. Sixty five and seven thousand dollars a piece and every cruiser has one. So we take advantage of the grants that are available off that price of the ask for the vehicle.
Do you do the grant writing? Do you have somebody?
Myself, Sergeant Roy and Sergeant Maxim responding. Um. Our traffic enforcement grant. Got twenty thousand dollars and change again this year. So that's a campaign that holds throughout the year addressing different. Violations, whether pedestrian bike safety, seatbelt, distracted driving and O U I enforcement. And so like that breaks out, you have a different campaign roughly every two months throughout the year. And this grant pays for the overtime associated with the officer, uh, conducting the additional enforcement. School safe signage grant, most recently, if you've been to the lower. Half of five brown schools, Sergeant Maxim wrote a school signage grant. Where they bring in additional signage, repaint entrances, exits to make. The dynamics on the school campus safer than they were. I know it's a new school, but. They reworked the area to make it even safer for the kids. Best, uh, mass best of dog. We do have canine nitro who requires various equipment. And they've been kind of do continue to support that program. And the med, uh, the med projects, if you've been to the P D, the drop off expired medications. Again, that's a high liability. Thing in most police departments because you have to account for those, those pills and prescriptions that are dropped in there. But what they do is once that's full, uh, evidence box gets sealed and off it goes, but destroyed. So since twenty seventeen. I started tracking everything that we bought outside of utilizing town funds. Whether that be grants, whether that be asset forfeiture money, et cetera. And to this date, we're at seven hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars of equipment. And. It's important to know, like, it's not flashy items that we bought, but this, I'm going to say a lot of towns have to go and ask. For. New, new handguns. We, this is the first year, last year of the last meeting. We needed tasers. Like, that's the first ask since twenty sixteen that we've had to ask for something other than a cruiser. So. The big ticket items, which are the cruiser radios and the portable radios, those are huge money. Uh, portable radios cost about forty seven, forty eight hundred dollars a piece. For our portable radios times twenty two. It's a lot of money and we've been able to, uh, maintain those and work in. A replacement plan. So every year I buy two with some of the communication grant money. So that when one goes down, we can very easily replace it without coming forward to the town. Uh, like the chief said, we do have a U T V. It's definitely not. Set up like a fire U T V. It'd be like driving a Pinto versus a Ferrari, right? Like us is the Pinto. It's a two seat. So you can throw whatever in the back and off you go. This is way cooler. Um, and far more versatile for what we do because. People fall off horses all the time in its community. Wasn't sitting on the farm.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I'm going to check you there. Yes, I have fallen off my horse a number of times, but I've never called the police.
So it happens a lot. And you see the private homeowners for, um. You know, one of the bigger horse farms and it requires an extrication burden, which we. I get asked, and we get asked a lot, like, what, what, what does your department bring to the town in terms of funding? Like, what types of revenue? It's a little bit different for your ambulance.
Yeah.
Us. We have detailed admin. So for last year, we brought in thirty one thousand and change for administrative fees. For private details. So if you're a private contractor and order a detail. You're going to assess a detailed administrative fee, town details. License to carry. Just about three thousand dollars have come back to the town. Crash reports. Just under five hundred dollars and solace, uh, solace refuse. There are six hundred bucks and grand total of thirty five thousand dollars, seven forty eight.
Question, how much is the detailed admin fee? Is that something you raise annually or?
Ten percent.
Ten percent period.
That, that hasn't been adjusted in, in years.
Yeah, I wonder what other people charge for that.
Is that, do you know if that's standard? I was thinking that was pretty standard.
Right. So this is one of the things that Chiefs of Byron, uh, discussed as well, just to, we look at some of the detailed fees. Um, the structure of those revenues coming in, et cetera. Where we haven't landed anywhere particularly yet, um, but we'll look at that model as well. Thanks.
So I, this is our organizational chat. For the department and I put it up because I think it's important. For you guys to kind of understand how, how we operate. I have four. Road sergeant, have. Civilized patrol jets. I have one detective sergeant. And I have an administrative sergeant. And in the last. Four years with policing, the. The amount of work has increased dramatically with posts. With training, with required training, um, accreditation, which is huge amongst Massachusetts law enforcement agencies. Currently, Sergeant Maxim, who's here, um, we've started the accreditation process. The new version came out a few months ago, version six. It's a ton of work. Uh, our policies are all there. Now it's up to us to implement proofs and have a committee come in. And take three days to tear apart the department and. Validate our existence. And by doing so, it opens us up to more grants, things like that. It's a, it's a real achievement for the department. That under their hat. You guys have any questions about the organization, please, uh, when they sign?
No.
No.
Uh, overtime line. So I'm just kind of, kind of bound between this slide and the actual overtime request for the, the police department. So the overtime request had gone up last year. And. Reason being. Every year. We get asked, like, what is your ask for overtime? I give a number. And then. It, it gets reduced and the reduced number is the best possible in the world. Nobody gets hurt. Nobody's out sick and injured and nothing happens that we have to respond to. Um. And what do I mean by that? There's. Always call, I'm going to say a lot where we require additional officers to be called in. And full disclosure, like depending on the severity of all crime, et cetera. I'm going to call the resources in that we need to. Bring a peaceful resolution to the situation or even find, um. A loved family member that may have left the area due to Alzheimer's, for example, right? So. You can't predict that. And, but what I can predict is. I've worked here since nineteen, June of ninety six, I started dispatching. We've always been down one, at least one person. And I feel like when you look at the overtime ask. It's kind of not really looked at, meaning, okay, here's the number for your budget. But I'm telling you, and history can tell us all, you're going to be down two officers. And even though you're down two. If, there's no offset. It costs money. If I'm down two and minimally staffed, that's overtime for an officer to come in. So. We really, like, I would ask that, you know, we consider the overtime. And look at the history. Fortunately, knock on wood, today, we're fully staffed and nobody's out. Last officer came back two weeks ago from being out injured. I've never worked in a police department fully staffed apartment.
I get that.
It's awesome, yeah.
Um, that would be the anomaly. Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, it's like going to work and having not one person, uh, full staff. It doesn't happen.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and it's, that's the way it works with public safety and even the D P W. Anything that requires a physical type job, it's going to happen. Um, but in that overtime, we cover vacation, personal sick time. Or any investigations on the job injuries and specialized training. Any questions about overtime?
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, fine.
Mandated training. We have forty hour inserters training mandated by the state of Massachusetts. If we do not complete that. You're not certified as a police officer in the state of Massachusetts. Every June for the last three years now, I have to upload all the training. Supporting rosters, et cetera, to post and the M P T C. So I'm being checked by two different organizations to make sure our offices are in good standing. And that keeps them certified. If they're not certified, they can't work here, anywhere in the state. So with that, in addition to the forty, we have taser training. You have to do that annually. Forty millimeter training, which is basically a less lethal, um. Saw, uh, racquetball that gets deployed. Both of those are less lethal options. Have to train those. Parkalizer certification. Firearms training. Handgun, rifle, shotgun. Specialized training that would apply to, um, you know, our court officer, our detective. Any special unit, they require special training, suicide prevention. Applied patrol and our latest, uh, less lethal device, which is the bolo rat. Any questions about the mandated training?
Quick question. The annual basis, chief?
Yes, sir.
And is that for all police officers?
I'm going to say most.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Almost all.
Yeah.
Specialized positions within, in our department, we have a canine officer, three licensed to carry officers, so they issue firearms licenses to the public. That is, those three officers are busy. We have people coming in, coming into the P D consistently. We have a court officer. The court officer's out on vacation. We have somebody in the queue as a backup. We have motorcycle officer. Officer assigned to SWAT, crisis negotiator. We have four sexual assault investigators. A school resource officer, three firearms instructors for field training. How, an I T dispatcher, so, uh, that dispatcher handles. Police. Um. Programs outside of the town I T manager. So police direct police related, uh, software and. He handles all the programming of our radio. So we keep that in house to keep that cost down. Uh, two drone pilots and two detectives. Any questions about that? Okay. Our marijuana impact request, it's the same request that we've come forth with every year that it's been in place. I understand it's coming to an end. But that said, we're asking for the S I R O salary. The marijuana stipends and, uh, fifty seven thousand dollars for, that goes towards all that training from two slides previous. But the grand total of a hundred and sixty four, seven thirteen thirty six. Any questions about that? I'm not rushing through this, but I'm also. Valuing your time here too, right? Um, so this year, the, the. I'm asking for three police officers and reason being, every year I'm asked for police officers. And my concern is. I've had the benefit. To have been here longer than the last three police chiefs put together. So by having that experience. I'm, when I got hired, we were in the pre-planning phases of. The base projects, Paul Brothers and Father Chief. Anything that's pre-planned, I was involved in those meetings. Then I was able to witness the construction of it. And now here come, we're, there are, like, people are living there, like, living their best life. Right? It's operational. And that was back in twenty. Sixteen, November. That said, over the, that period of time. Both myself and, and the fire chief, we knew this was coming. And, um. both myself and, and the fire chief, we knew this was coming. And um back in twenty twelve, you know, just a little over eight thousand calls for service incidents, we're pushing twenty thousand a year.
Did you think that it was going to be this impactful? You knew it was coming. We all knew it was coming. But did you think it was gonna be quite as?
A hundred, a hundred percent.
You did.
You put
I know.
Like what, what both myself and Chief Barrett has said, you know, you bring in um, over fifty-five and um, like a
Anthology, yep.
You're gonna have calls, all increase, whether it be medicals, um, sudden deaths, which we respond to, um, alarm calls. There's a lot of calls associated with that. And, and that, that holds true with all the other little housing projects that have popped up. So the median number, and this is the number, this is the same as that I've been asking for, and I know the population has increased. But the median number is twenty-one. Currently, right now, every shift is stacked with officers. So if an officer takes the day off, they can still run um, the shift without filling it. So for example, a three to eleven, if one takes the day off, they run it with three. The midnights, right now, we only have two out of the six shift. We run a four on and two off schedule. So two nights out of the total of six have three officers assigned. The other four nights, only two. So either one of those officers take the night off, that's an automatic fill. Or if they both take the night off, it's filled. Double fill. There's no doubt.
When you say an automatic fill or a double fill, what does that mean?
It means if you and I work in eleven to seven,
Yep.
Just you and I.
Yep.
You take the day off.
Yep.
We need to fill your spot, eleven to seven.
Does that mean over, that's overtime? So here's a question. With all the overtime you pay, have you figured out that if you get one or two or three, how much of that's gonna go away? I'd like a net number.
So I knew you'd ask me that question.
Well, good. I didn't even call you in prep yet.
So there is no, like, what, there's really no offset. Like, this is one hundred percent gonna cost the town money because we're increasing the number of officers.
I understand that, but won't a portion of this overtime go away? How is that not possible? What am I missing?
I think the question you're asking is if, if you had, if you had several officers.
If you had.
Yeah.
Oh.
So I, I was gonna say, you have the same number of employees and they're gonna still all have benefits and vacation voluntary time off, sick time, injuries.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So no matter if you have ten or if you have fourteen, there's still, it's all gonna happen. It's just gonna happen on a, a larger scale, right? For the same workforce, right? So you might have a small offset because maybe.
But if we, if you and I, again, if you and I are working a shift, God love us, God love the town, right? Um, um, and I don't come in, whether you have three more officers, they, they weren't scheduled for that shift. It's going to be overtime.
If
Am I correct?
Well, hypothetically, I had an additional hire, our shift would have three.
Okay, then wouldn't that?
Two be sufficient.
Two are sufficient, a hundred percent.
Okay, then wouldn't there, oh, but then the overtime is just the overtime piece. So it's not as big. It's not like a whole person.
I'm sure there'd be some savings, but not dramatic, not enough savings.
Cause I just told you ten minutes ago that historically, we have two people out injured. So in a perfect world, if nobody got hurt, sure, there'd be a little bit of
Okay, I got it.
I'm saying probably not.
In reality.
Reality is, there isn't.
I think a lot of people out there, including me, thinks that if you get another person, that salary gets washed with the overtime. But no way.
The two hundred thousand, two hundred and five thousand lead requesting may drop to one ninety-five, but that doesn't justify, you can't use that as justification for the positions.
Yeah, your rewards on this side are the service to the town.
Right.
Officer safety, right?
Yeah.
So fast response. We need to implement that. I can't stress that enough with all this building that's happening. It has happened because it's occupied. What we predicted in twenty nineteen, twenty sixteen, we're living in it.
Right.
It's already here. And that's not even including all the other
Stuff that's coming online.
So here's a, this is similar to the chief's graph from the other one, just laid out a little bit differently. So housing projects for twenty-three to twenty-four, total number of units, five hundred and seventy-five. New residents, roughly twelve hundred and thirty-five folks. But, but it doesn't include, I used uh, the lower of the numbers that Mr. Weiss had sent out. Two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight people, if in fact that whole MBTA thing was to rebuild that. Sort of, uh, Mr. Schultz's point earlier, I know
I think you could
Like two thousand, whatever it is.
You could take half easily.
Yeah.
Easily.
Overtime, but I think it's a twelve hundred that we're, that is a critical number, which more than justifies it already.
Yeah.
Because that's, the twelve hundred number's happening.
Yes.
I get it.
Going on the street right now.
Yes.
Um, anthology. I have a picture of these stats, so you can kinda
I like visuals, thank you.
So you, so you can really
I like it.
Appreciate what's going on here.
Was this taken by the drone that we just saw a little bit? We got a couple of
Millis, Town of Millis G I S. Yes.
Okay.
Um, so how did I come up with these, these calls?
Really nice.
I came up with them through our record management system. It tracks the number of calls and it actually tracks how long uh, officers are on scene. So anthology, I pulled the, the big three for the town. Two hundred and forty-three calls for service. No police department went up there. And we spent a hundred and sixty-nine hours adding anthology. For varying reasons. Toll Brothers, three hundred and twenty-nine units, roughly six hundred and fifty-eight people, hundred and fifty-one incidents. Seventy-three hours on scene. We, we're up there all the time, right? Stony Brook, three hundred and seventy-two calls for service. This is a Stony Brook that actually exists there right now, not the
Add-on.
The add-on.
Yeah.
Three hundred and seventy-two calls for service down at Stony Brook. Hundred twenty-nine. And they're planning on possibly a hundred and sixty units. So if you average it with three and a half people per unit, you're looking at five sixty. Two and three quarters, depending on the number of bedrooms, you're at floor forty increase. Uh, projects in the pipeline, Herman Shoe, ten sixty Main Street and the build across from Tractor Supply. Herman Shoe hasn't started yet, but the other two have. So that's coming soon as well.
The build across from Tractor Supply, Tom Roaches?
Yes.
That's only four units?
Um, no, I think that should be forty.
Yeah, I think so too.
Um, I picked it up on, on another slide here.
Okay.
One fourteen Union Street, Herman Shoe. Again, just to illustrate, yeah, it's a smaller footprint, but that's ninety-eight units.
Right.
That's a lot of units to uh, service. And depending on the room size, uh, that's the increase of the population of the people within those buildings. Ten sixty Main Street, the old Budabing site, that's what we're looking at there.
Yeah.
And Emerson Place. Half of that is occupied right now and So what is driving the need? The increase of population, the new build to town, the pre-planning, um, you know, like I said, the fire chief touched on it. With, we knew all this stuff was coming. So I feel like it should have been looked at a little bit better to increase the departments along with the builds. Because regardless, we know that a hundred percent, if Toll Brothers and Regency, hundred percent of the residents are gonna impact police fire DPW town directly. And it puts a, a strain on our, we do our job, but a significant increase in in calls for service. I'm sure if you're home during the day or even at night, there's, you hear the sirens every day. So it's not, I, I, like I said, I got here in ninety-six and it's definitely not like nineteen ninety-six. Unforeseen budgetary impacts. But this past year, we had an officer out for two years on injury. He just retired. And we had an officer that was out for four months, returned to work. And an officer out for three who returned to work. So we're at a hundred percent right now.
You put, you should put one of those signs up, like in The Simpsons, zero accidents.
Yeah.
You should put, how many days?
That's it.
You got a hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta change it to zero.
Jinx. Um, so moving on to the budget, at the actual budget, the salaries and the salaries. Like, that very contract negotiations now, so that is gonna change.
Number will go up. And we're, and we're close on a lot of those, but we're not there yet. But so that's why I was saying the finance committee may wanna wait just a little bit on some of these with heavy negotiations. We are
Under engaged.
We're, we're
I would say
I do.
That, that's fair to say it's, we're more than halfway there, I believe. So it's, it's, it's going, I think the negotiations are going well, productive.
Right.
Um, getting into the operational budget. There go slight increases down the line. Obviously, just to reiterate, you know, what the fire chief echoed, like, stuff costs more now, simply put. Whether it be maintenance contracts, whether it be vehicle repairs, um.
What is this slide we're looking at?
I'm trying to get you the uh,
That's, that's a desk copy.
Oh, got it.
It's just not there yet.
I hope you don't have any personal stuff up there this.
Set files.
That would be unprofessional.
Would it be? Like with your bank account, social security number, anything like that?
Sure be doing.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Chief, what are you including in your maintenance contracts? By, something that we took, right? I didn't know what additional maintenance contracts we have that have gotten.
So maintenance, what I'm including in the maintenance contracts, all police related um, service contracts for
Police equipment?
Police, yeah, equipment, or police software programs.
Nothing that we moved to town buildings, right? You took that one out?
Yes.
Stuff that's exclusive to you.
And, and in this case, it looks very much like the FY twenty-five budget and the FY twenty-six include the marijuana funds.
Correct.
Really?
Yeah, I'm seeing fifty-seven thousand dollars in marijuana funds in fifty, twenty-five and twenty-six. So it looks like the marijuana funds are factored into this presentation.
So
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I spoke to the finance director, I didn't really got to articulate this to you, but where the funds have not been appropriated to the police department with marijuana funds, they should go into the, the budget. Yes, that's why I put them in the budget because
Yeah, I like, I, that's why I'd like to see all of it, just so we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, and that's just a um, style shift
Yeah.
Between me and the previous finance director, which is, again, there's a bunch of different ways to do it. I like to see the holistic number. And then sort of breaking it out like the chief did, um, to identify what was, you know, exactly.
Yeah, because I look at it, my, my concern is, yeah, we're gonna have a hundred and sixty-three thousand that goes away. So on top of the two hundred and ninety-one, we're asking for the new officers. We gotta find a hundred and sixty-three just to stay even.
Right.
Not this year, but
Right.
The following year, yeah.
That's the other thing.
So the bridge is a little further than it appears because of the NCA funds.
The other um, strategy that we need to talk about is, again, looking at these things that have been recurring over the last several years. And say, how are we incrementally funding these so that if this is a resource that we desire to stay on longer term, that we're not looking at a zero to a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar gap, right? So maybe it's halfway funded, maybe it's, you know what I mean? Over the next stretch.
Yeah, because I think you can get to the hundred and sixty-three, but getting to a hundred and sixty-three plus two ninety-one is tougher by a hundred and sixty-three. Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so on this, on the spreadsheet for the whatever, the budget spreadsheet, um, just a question, the SRO. So the education, Quinnville line has amount on it for the SRO for marijuana stipends and so does the wages. Why is that number in both places? Just curious.
Uh,
The same number.
Yeah, the sixteen thousand ninety-five dollars.
Well, it's
I'm confused, sorry, I'm just confused.
So I noted that there because if, again,
Yep.
That would have to be, that would come out of that.
The twin bill?
To go to the SRO.
Oh.
That is the, that is the educational funding for um, the stipend that that officer receives for having a four-year degree.
Oh.
I just wanted to make it like clear that like, the mon, the money is associated to the education.
To that line item.
Correct.
So then the, it's noted on the second line down just because that's the cumulative total.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I just want I think like, so like, it, like, there was no, nobody thought I was playing games with others, I guess.
Okay.
And I did the same thing with the training and the same thing with the stipend for the
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question. Yeah, when Chief's down again.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Um, any questions on the police department operation, Chief? Right, should lock a salary, some issue that you folks don't have, maybe. Like I said, it's, it's pretty close to what it was.
I don't, I don't think there's anything that's outside of inflationary changes.
Right. Um, and dispatch, small contingent of individuals there that we have to service. Again, that is, that is what it is and, and it's pretty close to, to the last year's budget. But then you've been drastically there, now I'm happy to regress it.
Well, that will change a little bit with negotiations as well.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
So they're in negotiations
Yeah.
With police and they, they've been doing it the same day, so.
I guess you can finish first here out of the three of us.
I'm working on it.
I'm close.
You guys have any questions?
I'm good. You, you good?
No, I'm good. I, I understand it. I, it's just down math.
I have no, we have no capital requests.
Thank you.
Where are you on your schedule for cruisers?
So we, we're replacing two a year.
Yep.
On average. And then, so with nine, six thousand dollars onto the vehicle line, which has been a huge help. And so thank you for putting that into the budget uh, last year because it has helped out. Where we're not tied to the town meeting to go buy that vehicle. And we, we had one good hour, we didn't buy it. But we're on the two cruiser replacement cycle and it's working well. So we have the two cruisers and then the remainder, the difference between the two cruiser, new cruiser lease and that number is servicing the other cars that are on lease. And as they drop off.
You put the ones on, okay. I agree.
And one final question. The grounds, you don't maintain. You don't have a lawnmower in your, one of your uh, jail cells.
I don't move the lawn.
So you hire out
Correct.
To a service. Okay. And you pay?
Uh, no, I think that's switched. We moved it over to the town.
Oh, we pay. Okay, and snowplow, same thing?
Uh, the town plows, we have a small plow on a, uh, U T V to get the snow away from like the doors.
Yeah, but the town comes in and takes care of it.
Town does, and we have um, a couple of individuals that will shovel the plow places.
You have a snowshoe, yeah, we have a snowshoe.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I think we're good. You almost got us back on track. We have three more. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Kathy, you ready?
Do that.
I know. Me too. One second.
Okay.
We'll do that, don't worry. Don't do that, don't worry. Are you, this is either the plan? Let me give it to Tracy, just go to new, uh, setup. So I'm just reading them from all schedules with Nick. Okay. Thanks, Susan, we have, we're going to Canada. Uh, I don't hope it'll be true.
I've been doing two, Jim, that was easier.
Yeah, it's perfect. I'm gonna bring it up right now. All right, um.
Nice job. I know, I was thrilled, not gonna lie.
All right, good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Stealing something out of my folder, but then I'm just putting something in my folder. I don't need the preliminary, there's gonna be, we went out a couple of weeks. Yeah, yeah. Hey, you brought in technical assistance.
My guys. I was, it's, he held him on, he's been on, you know, running with us, like, that's amusing. Yeah, he's wrapping, and we're gonna, voted by the chief, didn't you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, quick change. Yeah, it was really impressed when I saw the, um, communication from the fire chief about his classified form of planning. And I went to the red cross, and this car was really long, you get, um, it hasn't just, you know, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have some more, we had another order in California, I mean, I guess we, I knew, and they all went back.
Good. It is, but like that kind of proactive, you know, outreach, I'm, I'm so.
No, we have to be good, Jim.
It's like, you're saying. I know, it's not, it's not, I run the water, I was, they're out, spinning.
I had to call in all the pro, I had to call in my daughter to tell them the slides, so.
Can tell you, I, or story, that's crap, uh, somebody went to, that's, yeah, and we, we would take him out in the back and pick him.
And shoot him?
I think she would have.
That's the horse.
The horse is fine, he walked out, that's because we brought the crazy two-year-old horses. Yeah, we put people on it.
So this is my, this is my.
We're having some extra copies made, I think might have been that, yes.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have anything in our box.
We're having, we're having a couple, it was a couple missed.
For some reason.
Well, I have my copies.
It's here, look at me.
What do you, what tab are you? They go in the wrong tab. I got, I got the registrars.
Get something?
Seniority, I've been here a little longer. Well, then I have nothing.
Under the book, oh, good, then my book's right, you got the wrong book.
Well, I don't feel suspenseful anymore. And for the.
Okay, do we need to wait? Yes, was it not the, no, you, you, good job.
Yeah, start, please.
Jody and I met, and I know we have three budgets, it's election registrar town clerk. We talked about trying to coordinate it, trying to make it, streamline it a little bit. So this is just a general overview of what we're doing. So the future of the town clerk's office, there are some questions pending resolution, as you all know. Uh, does the town clerk position get appointed, um, or will it remain elected? Um, will there be a new town clerk elected in the current stipend that Lisa used to have? So that's our big question in our office right now. Um, the budget that I'm presenting is the town clerk is a forty-hour week department head. The assistant town clerk will be a thirty-hour week position, which is an increase of twelve point five hours from staffing.
To both positions?
To both positions, yes, yeah. Sue right now is twenty and I am thirty seven point five, so we'll go to forty and thirty.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just answered that first question, they'll take a town meeting vote to change it to elected, as you know.
Correct.
From elected to appointed and.
And you have to pass both at the meeting and on the ballot.
And on a ballot, it's a charter change, and that's something that's open for discussion right now, so we can't give you an answer.
No, I, I, no, I'm just saying, we're presenting it this way, it could change, Jody and I talked about this.
Yes.
Um, however we wanna present it, but this is the way we'll present it now and see what happens, we're not sure, we're kind of in limbo. Um, the next one is just election turnout, um, just to give you some, uh, as you all know, we had a busy year, we had four elections and two town meetings, that's just some basic information. One thing I do wanna point out, if anyone is questioning the extra hours in the office, is the demand for mail-in ballots. In June of twenty twenty two, Massachusetts, um, General Law Chapter fifty-four, section twenty-five B was passed, and now we have to send out ballots to all registered voters. Before, you either had to have a medical condition or a religious reason why you couldn't come and vote on that day. So just to give you an example, for the presidential election, we mailed out three thousand three hundred and twenty-five ballots. Prior to that, before this new act, um, and it was based on COVID, when people wanted to mail in, uh, we mailed out about forty to fifty. And in one of my mentoring classes, we just, they, we were talking about how the town clerk's position has changed so dramatically over the past four years. Um, it, just to give an example, this is what it was prior to the mail-in, ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of people would come in, they would vote, they would put it in the voting machine, and that would be gone. And now, the mail-in process is just dramatic, it's huge, we have, the mail, the state mails out a postcard, we get the postcard back, we scan it. We get all the ballot information ready, we scan it again, we mail it, it comes back in, we scan it, and then we have to put it, we have to have advanced deposit and early removal to get those ballots in before, um, the weekend before the election. We obviously can't print any results or tape until election night, but it's changed dramatically in our office, this particular law. Now, we have done election grants, I just finished those Friday, um, so there are grants that we get money back from the state for mail-in ballots and early voting, um, based on this new June twenty twenty-two law, so we do get grants back, uh, we don't know exactly how much we get back, which is a little different, because I just did the grant for last September and last December, so we're a few, few months behind, and I don't know if we'll get it, hopefully we'll get it by the end of the fiscal year, so we can balance everything together.
Do you always get it?
I, yes, I, well, it, since it happened, I have always done it and I have always got something.
You've always gotten something.
I've always got, but you just don't know what they'll question, whether, you know, I think what, what was twenty, uh, twenty-five to thirty thousand, now she'll may come back and say, you know, we're not gonna pay for this and that and that. But, um, it's quite, quite involved, quite intense, but, um, it's free money, so we're gonna keep doing whatever grants, grants they ask us to do. Um, the next one is, we'd like to increase civic involvement. Basically have a registration table at the high school, there's a lot of, uh, Marion Zyamba is very involved in that, um, but we'd like to go over there and, you know, help kids who are brand-new, uh, voters. We've also had a lot of requests from the seniors to make sure they have sample ballots downstairs, voter registration information, and town meeting information. So we do boards and things like that to get them involved, um. We do guided tours with the elementary school students that come in, um, to learn about the town of Milis and, and civic, you know, what happens here, what we do here. And also, we'd like to streamline our online and in-person election information. Um, I think that's something that every, you know, we'd like to get more people involved, and we're seeing that in town meeting with a lot of regency plays, and you know, we went from one eighty-seven to four twenty-four. Granted, it's always, is there an override question, is there a school question?
So when you, what was that last bullet, what was the last one, streamline, online, in-person election, what does that mean?
Just to talk to people, people come in, I, I can't tell you, I've probably got thirty-five phone calls for people who've got their census, and it has a U under voter, and they think they're unregistered. I said, no, you're unenrolled, right, you're unenrolled, the old independent party, so to take the time to put some information out on the website.
Okay.
You know, what, you know, we let them now scan the, um, the census back, and people have questions, where's town meeting, I'm brand-new, where's town meeting? Where's the middle high school? We have it all, as you all know, on the postcard and everything else, two forty-five Plain Street, but they need specific instructions as to, so maybe we can tell them, you know, if you get to the intersection of one oh nine and one fifteen, take a lap, that, you know, that type of thing. Yeah, because we're getting with, uh, like everyone else, every other department with all these new residents, we get lots of new questions.
Yep.
And they want more information on the website. And we, we could, our, our office could definitely improve our website, um.
All of our offices.
Yes, yes, so that's something that we'd like to. Um, oh, mentoring, yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so we'd like to continue mentoring classes and conferences, um, they, uh, hold mentoring classes and conferences, which I think is important. We very rarely have attended them in the past, but it's like anything else, um, we need to meet people. Um, so, uh, while we're navigating all the changes in our office, uh, we have found these resources invaluable, we talk about election procedures, advanced removal and deposit of ballots, staying up to date on all the new laws. Becca Rouse just sent out an email to all of us about, um, Election Modernization Act, which impacts about twenty, twenty-two different, um, chapters and sections, so that's, every time there's something new, it takes a lot of training for us to make sure we do everything correctly.
I get that, yeah.
Um, so we'd like to continue these classes and conferences to make sure our office is efficient as possible. And now we're, um, the big thing we need to do in our office is to enhance office filing, we have planning board zoning, um, we have the applications, the decisions, the plans. Like, we know, as, as everything grows, I probably had about maybe twelve people come in for the curb cut at ten sixty Main Street, the old Butterbanks. There wasn't supposed to be a curb cut on Main Street. So they wanna see the minutes, they wanna see the plans, they wanna see the decision, they want, happy to do it, but we have to be organized and have it there, and then it does take time. And any new project, any butter for any new project is gonna wanna see the plan, they're gonna wanna see all the decisions from the planning board, the zoning board, anything like that, so like every other office, I know you said coherent, it, it impacts, new, new development, new construction impacts our office. Um, not probably as much as police and fire, but it does impact the traffic in our office.
But that's not something that can change.
No, 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 we're just saying what we'd like to do, yes.
I know what it is.
Yes, yes, we'd like.
But that's, but that's where it belongs.
Oh, absolutely, but right now, right, we have, some planning is filed alphabetically, some zoning is filed by, um.
No, I get that, but I think my question is more like, um, they wouldn't go to the planning board, no, they have to go to you.
Yes.
You get a certified copy, the whole thing.
You have the twenty-day appeal for the, uh.
Maybe you put all this stuff.
In, in lots of different file cabinets.
Tiny, tiny, teeny.
Well, well, it's funny, because in the, you know, we're going, you know, as, as it's a change, I'd like to do something where, like I said, some of the planning is by address, some of the planning is by owner's name. Some of it's by address, so, um, if I'd like to, you, we, Sue and I would like to unify it, to try to make, everything is by date, everything is by street, everything is by, you know, that, so we can, so it's easier for us to find the information.
Yep, I guess that's.
Um, let's see, um, we'd like to find creative ways to, uh, bring technology into our office, um, such as town meeting clickers, we're looking into that, um, digitalizing vital records and establishing bylaw software. Uh, we've talked to Jim, we've talked to a few people, Camille and I are, are, would love to be able to have someone be able to search the zoning bylaws or the general bylaws or the charter bylaws, charter changes or charter, it basically, if you say the word, um, uh, let's say noise complaint or something, you can find it, right now, they're all in PDFs, so you don't, you can't find, you have to scroll, check the table of contents, you have to do all that to try to find something, so there is software available. Of course, it's costly, but we'd like to look into different things like that. Um, we'd like to make sure we have retention schedules to purge, we like to keep, in our office, we keep everything and anything, so we'd like to be able to follow the Commonwealth's, uh, requirements, but purge a lot of the old stuff that we don't need to make room for obviously the new stuff coming in. And, um, create a procedures manual, as we know, Lisa's exit was rapid, and, uh, we had no procedure manual in place for a lot of the things that Lisa, um, Lisa did. Um, so a procedure manual would help if there's ever a, a quick exit from our office again.
Yeah, SOPs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Um, yeah, election staff and training, uh, we wanna optimize the staff, the sign-up and scheduling, um, and create some education, as we, Sue and I have learned in the past couple of years, we, 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 during election season, we do, um, a Zoom meeting with the Secretary of the Commonwealth every week for about ten weeks. Um, and we need to take some of that information and train our election workers on it, so that, that takes time, like anything else. Um, so we wanna make sure that our election workers have the most up-to-date information about the poll pads and the tally sheets at the end of the night, and all the new regulations that are happening. And basically highlight election volunteer or work opportunities within the community. We have several people who come and, you know, I'd like to work the election, but you, you know, you have to get their name, and then, are you serious? Um, we've tried to get some younger election workers in, but unfortunately, we had three people, two of them got full-time jobs, so we trained them, we got all the paperwork, we did everything, they were fabulous, and then we called them back for the next election, guess what, I have a new full-time job. So we need, we constantly have to get people, uh, people to staff. And lastly, just, um, the potentials of the increased population, um, I'm looking into this, I don't know, but as, if we go over ten thousand, which I know the police and fire have already told you is coming, based on everything, we may need to have a new precinct, which we, we can't fit anything else in the gym, which means we might have to go to Clyde Brown or the high school. Um, and if we do that, that means more voting machines, more poll pads, more staff. And with like anything else, the more residents, the more demand for dog licenses, vitals, uh, you know, anything like that, so same thing. Um, does anyone have any questions so far? And then we can go through a little bit of our budget.
No.
Basically, we, um, you'll be happy to see, I don't know which, do you have the final, I've got the full one.
I think we just got it.
Okay, yeah, okay. Basically, you'll be happy to see that we are decreasing, because this year we only have one election versus four elections last year, so our final number, I'm reading, that's the one, because it's little, um, two eighteen, um, eight ninety-one, um, there are, again, we did the, the stat, the biggest thing is obviously the increase in hours of top, do you see that? So that, that you have total for all three budgets. Oh, with the bottom, sorry, yeah.
I see two sixteen.
Two sixteen, ten.
Okay, so that was the other one, so we'll, okay.
Okay, all right.
Close, yeah, we're in the bottom. I would just say that, uh, with only one election, because if we do have an override in November for the school, if that should happen, that would be another election at some point.
If you have a special election.
If we have a special.
Yeah, yeah, each election is about fifteen thousand for the staffing and everything else, and about five thousand for the coding of the ballot, ballots.
Well, we'll know at some point.
Thousand per election, about, around, yeah. What we're trying to do, again, is not, we're trying to flatten some things out.
Yeah.
So we know that an election's gonna come every four years, every two years.
Two years, we have a primary, yeah.
So instead of the budget going like the line items, to be strategic around, you know, a base amount, and then if we need to supplement in a budget year through free cash or another thing for that special occurrence, so that we're not fluctuating the operating budget so much, um, Kathy and I talked through that as well, so you'll kind of see, um, after these presentations, and then I go back and say, okay, here's what my recommendation is going forward to account for those simple things that we know are coming, but without, you know, adjusting the budget, twenty thousand dollars in her budget every, you know, every.
So in other words, carried at fifty-three thousand and then supplement a special, or whatever number it might be, and then twenty thousand for additional election.
Yeah.
Okay.
To have, you do, my only, I wanna be very cautious, because like I said, I just finished the grants, and we have to be able to say how much postage was towards election, how much, and you know, how many hours that, that's why it's nice to have a separate election budget with some of this, you know, how much did you spend in labels and toner and this, because we get reimbursed for that. So that's where, um, I just wanna work with Jody on trying to make sure that, um, everything with the grants and stuff is, uh, is coded properly and we can find it.
And thank you for bringing that up, and, and again, we won't get in the weeds here on that, but those are all the fine tuning details that every department has, and I'm working on with them. So that we can ensure, again, we talked about a grant as well, you know, um, a salary grant, a stipend that can directly get reimbursed for additional wages or whatever we wanna use it for.
Correct.
Um, but it has to be built into the operating budget, it's kind of like the library, right, when we have, you have to have a certain percentage for books and materials. When we have, you have to have a certain percentage for books and materials as part of the overall operating budget.
Yeah.
So we just have to do some things behind the scenes to make sure that we qualify. Um, but again, it's just an opportunity to take advantage of some additional state funds.
Perfect, yeah. Um, you, we need to go in-depth in each one or it's basically where. Um, I guess our biggest question is what's gonna happen and that will impact what, what we do.
Right.
So we really don't know the answer to that yet.
But that's what it impacts, that'll just impact salary.
What's gonna happen with what, town clerk?
Yeah.
Right, as it relates to contractual increases versus, right, so that's the model that might change.
It'll have significant impacts, the difference between maintaining an elected town clerk. So the, the, the FY twenty-six request column, does that include the twelve and a half additional hours or not?
Yes.
It does, okay.
The new, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. The number by seventeen. Yeah, and that'll all get smoothed out.
Yeah, so that, that's fine. I mean, it's, it's, I don't see anything on this budget that would alarm me and I like the idea of. Only carrying the traditional amount for a election, uh, in it and then supplementing with free cash.
And things are always different. Like you said, who knows if we're gonna have a special election, if the state's gonna have a special, we don't, we don't know, um, but we'll.
No, but you certainly know when the.
Oh, yes, the major ones, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, every two years, every two years we get slammed.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody?
Any questions? Comments?
Nope.
Yeah.
Sue, any comments? Anyone to add?
Any adds?
The only thing I do want to add is you'll also notice in the elections budget, um, because we're looking at three sort of stacked, you're gonna look at the, the difference, you know, overall. Um. But as we shook some things out from the elections budget and then reclassified or redistributed some of those operating expenses to kind of return to what we felt. They belonged. So if the town clerk's office was doing, you know, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm making it up, but like census work, right? That's not attributed to elections necessarily.
Correct.
So we took those line items and put them back in town clerk where they belong. So again, you might see some swings within these smaller budgets, but it's again, to true up where they should be. Um, so you'll see some of those changes as well.
Our census, we have technically in our wages, our budget, we could, we can always change it, but. Um, just to try to give an idea of how much we spend on first, second, third mailing.
Yep.
Um, that we're required by the state to do.
Okay, perfect.
Awesome, thank you. Wow, Erin, don't even sit down.
Thank you, Jim. Thank, thank you to my IT, my IT person.
Yes, animal control.
My favorite one. Get to talk about animals, not people.
All right, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, all right.
Just about to text you. Yeah, he's a little quick on that. I, I.
All right. Front of the book.
Yeah.
You can, yeah, like three minutes early, but go ahead.
So I don't really have much, um, that I'm changing as far as the. Uh, budget itself. You can see that I added a line in there for training because we never had one before.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I just moved some line items around. And, um, my big thing is the vehicle.
Uh, just to, just briefly, um. Uh, Erin is a member of the S C I U, which is on negotiation, so that may impact some of the. Line items in the address, so just a heads up, just like the other departments that came in.
Okay.
Yeah, so now that's changed, just, um, we just added training.
Now we share you.
Yes.
We should explain that right off the bat.
Yes, so we have an interminable agreement with the town of Medway and, um. Erin is an employee of the town of Milis, um, and Medway, um, pays us.
Oh.
Um, for, for a portion of her service.
Okay.
And her assistant.
Is it half?
No, I think it's sixty, forty. I think they pay more.
They pay sixty because of the population.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a little, little larger community, so they pay a little more.
Yeah, and they have more calls for service than we do.
Okay.
And I know that, um, a new vehicle is part of your request and, 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 um, they will be paying an apportionment, apportionment of that as well. So the hun- hundred and twenty-five thousand here under the request would be split sixty, forty, or basically, is that right? That's not our percentage. Yeah, pretty close to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And how does that work? Do we send them the bill? We bill them quarterly. Do they pay?
I have a phone number of someone older there. If it was a problem.
But we don't lose sight of it as well. That I M A, um, will be coming due at the end of June, so the town administrator will be working through that to bring it up to be.
We need to renew that agreement this.
So this is a funny story. She's in the union.
Yes.
We negotiate her contract. And then they have to pay it.
Yes.
I like everything about it.
They pay sixty percent.
I know, but still. Give you a little more of this.
I like that. I like.
Since, since Mike.
Um, as far as the vehicle goes, uh, the estimate for the vehicle, um. The actual price of the vehicle is fifty-one thousand, two twenty-five. Now, Medway has designated to give twenty-five thousand.
But they, they, they are doing it in phases, so basically I spoke with them, they're gonna, um, they're gonna have the other amount. Um, I believe either this spring or this fall.
Okay.
Um, there was a reason for that and so they will be paying that the necessary percentage, even though they've only put aside twenty-five so far. And so when this comes up to the capital planning, it'll be a seventy thousand dollar request, but a certain. But only a portion of it is funded by, by the town of Milis.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
There are some extras on here. Um, the estimate that I got was for, uh, one of the police vehicles. This is what he gave me, but there's obviously extras in here that, that I don't need, so I'm asking for seventy thousand.
So why do you need a new vehicle?
Why do I need one? The current vehicle has a hundred and twenty-six thousand miles on it. It's not equipped as an animal control vehicle. It legit is a F one fifty with a backseat. And a front seat, so there's no caging to keep myself or the, even the animals that are transported safely.
Okay, but it, but it's running.
It runs.
So what will become of it, you know?
Uh, we can trade, we can trade it in.
You could trade it? Okay.
So if we trade it in, then we, then whatever's left over could be used in the future for another capital project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's not tell Medway how much we got stolen. I shouldn't say that on the open.
No, these are things you don't say.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't think. I have too much to.
Yeah.
I'm pretty simple as usual.
Yeah, it's not complicated on this one.
I love it, and I love that you put her before lunch.
Yeah.
You get an hour and a half, an hour, not just an hour.
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Good.
Good.
You good? Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Enjoy your lunch.
Thank you. So, that's it, right?